Rose, you ready?
Ready.
Okay.
Roll call for the City Council meeting of Wednesday, June 4th at 9:00 a.m. Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Heran Kunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski. All please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge of allegiance.
Mr. President, I'd ask that we, in this moment of silent meditation and prayer, that we remember those who are less fortunate than we are in our community, locally as well as globally. We also ask that we remember those who have lost loved ones since we've been in this chambers on the last, at our last meeting. Also, in addition to that, ask for, ask that we pray for those in our community who see violence as a rational means of problem solving. And we ask for a change of heart for those who are living that sort of lifestyle. And finally, we ask our God and Creator to give us wisdom, to be able, and the proper information, to be able to make the best decisions for the citizens of the city of Erie.
I'd also like to remember a colleague of mine at RAS Autobody and friend of 20 years who passed away this past week at a very young age. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to accept the minutes from the meeting of Wednesday, May 21st, and bills for payment on June 6, 13th, and 20th, 2014. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Heran Kunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon.
Request for repository sales. Who's the housing authority? Want to speak on, John? Yeah, okay. Okay. Are there any repository sales? Are there any repository sales? Are there any repository sales? Hearing none. Citizens to be heard, we have Mr. Randy Barnes first and Mr. William T. Myers to follow him.
Morning, Council President, Council members, staff, administration, those guests with us electronically. My name is Randy Barnes, 109 Walton Point, and came to speak on economic development. And I had the opportunity last Friday to attend two different meetings at the railroad terminal intermodal was discussed for Erie County. And even though it was abruptly pulled from the Harbor Creek location, and it's not a completely dead issue, developers are actively pursuing other locations where it could be situated. And that's the reason I'm here this morning. I'd like to ask Council to consider a resolution requesting your own office, the Department of Economic and Community Development that's located here on the fourth floor, requesting them in a resolution to do everything they can to work with Representative Harkins, the local developer, and CSX to understand why this intermodal rail yard could not be situated at the Downing CSX yard. There's only been one person that said it can't go there, and that's the developer. CSX has never gone on record and stated that you couldn't have an intermodal rail yard at their existing terminal at Downing and 14th Street approximately. So with that being said, again, I think it would be appropriate for Council to request your Department of Economic Community Development, they're an important part of the city, the Department of Economic Community Development. They have over a $1 million budget a year to keep the office running, and they provide a lot of grants. I see even on today's agenda, there's things to transfer money from the Community Development Block Grant to other accounts, so. I think it's the worthwhile thing. I think Council has to take the lead on this. You seven members are a strong body compared to one mayor or one department head, but the seven of you speaking unanimously through this resolution, and I know several of you know how to nice, write those nice flowery resolutions where it goes to herefore and thereas and all those nice words. I'd encourage maybe one to be written up and considered at the next council meeting. Because we know this city is, as lean as it is, is still a hungry monster, and it eats revenue. And the one thing I can stand here and tell you for sure, it's going to have a bigger appetite next year than it does this year. And spurring this economic development is one way to help fill that grocery cart so that big monster keeps fed. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Administration, could you look into that further, please? Thank you. Mr. William T. Myers. Don't see him, therefore, citizens to be heard. Morning.
My name is McDonald. My property is 19th and Reed. I, uh, I don't understand the mayor. You got money for everybody in here. I'm seeing all these different sums of money transferred from here to there. It's Greek to, I'd say, all the citizens out there, because they don't understand these numbers on here. It's not explaining where it's coming from or where it's going, really. Our kids, he say he's not going to do nothing about that, he ain't got no money, but I see a lot of money floating around here. You know, he must don't have no kids, because he don't seem to have very little, none, no compassion at all. Those kids need to be doing something. And if they're not doing nothing out there constructive, you know, they're going to get in trouble. I think our kids should be our first concern. They should concern you all. You got kids, because you, you give your kids, they got an allowance. Those poor kids out there, doing good to get something to eat. It's important. I see them foreigners, you see them walking the street, drinking beer, smoking cigarettes. But I had a daughter, my daughters go to Gannon, and I'm trying to get them, I want all of my kids to do better than me. And I worked hard in my time, but I want them to do better than me. I want them to do better than y'all. They took my social security, but still, all these foreigners walking. We had enough people walking the streets before they got here. I haven't heard of any, I'm not against them now, I don't blame them. Come on over here and get this free money. Get this free everything. Clean your house up before you try to clean someone's else up. The Bible said, "Get the mote out of your eye before you start looking at your neighbor." We got enough problems over here, and we're bringing problems. I mean, we're bringing them in by the boatloads, but that's okay. I don't have a lot of time left. I won't be here, and I know that. A lot of you think you're going to never die, but take my word for it, you're leaving here. One way or the other, you're leaving here. We, I don't know. I see these jobs going along, going on. I don't see no peoples of color out there on them jobs. Y'all don't think we need no money? Y'all, what your mindset at, or do you have a mind up there in that box up on top of your body? Every contract that the city hire should have minorities, your so-called minorities in there, but I don't see them. I don't see no white faces out there. Black folks don't need nothing, I guess. We're lazy. How you think you got where you are? We were out there in the cotton field, our four parents were out there in the cotton field, working for nothing, for slaves and that out there. And y'all, your parents were sitting up under the tree, drinking tea and that, and we're lazy. We invented hard work. Y'all gonna wake up one of these days, I promise you that, though. You can't see no further than your nose, but you're gonna look farther. I guarantee you that. You're gonna wish you had a listen to some of this stuff I'm telling you. Mr. McAdory and I have been telling you for the longest to do something for our kids, and you don't want to do nothing. You got a mayor up there, he's, he, I don't know, he demonstrate that he's prejudiced. I'm not going to do nothing for them. Who do he think he is? I haven't seen nothing he did since he been up there, but I know he's not his own boss. He takes orders from somebody, just like you take orders from him. You would think he put you in office. He got that $30,000 raise, whatever, he was getting too much as it was. I don't dislike him, but I don't like his way of doing business. Our kids don't mean nothing to him, and our kids mean everything to me, and I hope yours too. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other citizens to be heard?
Mr. President, as our next citizen is coming up, Mr. McDonald, could you check, I just want to say, our summer rec, the city's summer rec program? I think there's information on that in the clerk's office. That's, you would, that would be a great place for you to grab, and some information for you to grab, and spread that out through the community of people that you interact with, because that's where a lot of the city's money has been going for years in programming for young people and youth, not just the new summer job program. So that would be good information for you to have, and may answer some of your questions that you just presented. Okay? Yes, sir.
Good morning. Jay Brenneman, 2416 East 40th Street. I have the pleasure and honor of also serving a great portion of the southeast part of the city of Erie on county council. I'm here this morning, I took time off of work to be here, and I'm here to, I actually want to thank you. I want to thank you for the support, both financial and otherwise, that you have provided our youth and our citizens of all ages in the past and currently as well. I've seen a great deal of the opportunities and activities that are available, different parts of the city, different type of activities, and I know it's hard to get that word out to all those things that you are doing, and I hope that people will have the chance to learn more about them. I am here to invite you to be a partner, a partner in the success of a newly formed program. It was, it did come about quite quickly, but I do want to assure you that it is a program that meets a great deal of accountability, rigor, and measurement. The Summer Jobs Program, known as Erie Jobs &amp; More, is funded a great deal by Erie County Council and also the Erie County Gaming Revenue Authority. With these two, it's a fully funded program. We have the funding needed for this program. It is about the size, one-third the size of the program in Pittsburgh, and we're all, and it just, it's about the right fit for a start. The important part is we want to do this right. We can go big, but if we were to fail right off the bat, then the disasters, it would be disastrous, and it would be really, really difficult to recover from that. So I'm not here to ask you for money. I'm not even here to ask you for future money. I'm here to ask you for your support in getting the word out about the program. The application process for this jobs program for youth 16 to 21 will be coming up soon. I'll be sure to provide you with that information, and also to help get the word out to the employers. Let them know that we have ready and able youth that want to work and get that experience, and that it helps the workforce, and helps the employers to know that we have a trained workforce, or that we are serious about training our youth so that they can take those jobs in the future. We need a coalition for this. We need to, we need your help as the largest municipality in the area to show support so that we can get independent funding in the future for this. We have to look at it as one part of the fight, one part of the fight against poverty, one part against fight for economic growth. Hopefully, I think it will help address issues of delinquency. Violence is a big problem, but you can't fight, as I know it being in the military, and I know Councilman Kwiatowski as well, that you don't fight a war with one weapon. You have to use different skill sets, you have to use different weapons and different knowledge. And so I want to thank you again for everything that you do, and ask again for your support for the future success of this program. Have a great day.
Thank you very much, Councilmen.
Ordinances for final passage.
Rose?
Yes.
Are there any other citizens to be heard? Rose got a, Rose got a meeting somewhere. Are there any other citizens to be heard? Are there any other citizens to be heard? And now, here's Rose.
Okay. Ordinances for final passage. Council file number 15873, official ordinance number 192014, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $34,000 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue, and providing for the expenditure thereof, police drug and vice program. By Mr. Kwiatowski and seconded by Mr. Brennan, that the council file ordinance, bill number 15873, and now known as official file ordinance 192014, be finally passed by the city council. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Heran Kunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. City Council pass official file ordinance number 192014, seven yeas, nays, zero. Ordinances for first reading, council file number 15874, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $40,000 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue received from an Erie County Greenway program grant, and providing for the expenditure thereof for McClellan Park improvements. By Mr. Mersky and seconded by Mr. Witherspoon, that council file ordinance number 15874, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Heran Kunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance number 15874, yeas, seven, nays, zero, Council file 15875, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $2,849,966 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from HUD, $298,05224, reprogram funds from previous community development block grant years, and $10,000 program income for a total of $3,158,1824 for the fiscal year 2014 projects. By Mr. Jones and seconded by Mrs. Heran Kunso, that council file ordinance number 15875, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Heran Kunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance 15875, yeas, zero, or yeas, seven, nays, zero, on first reading. Council file number 15876, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $658,817 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from HUD for the following home projects. By Mr. Jones, seconded by Mrs. Heran Kunso, the council file ordinance number 15876, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Heran Kunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance 188, 15875, yeas, seven, nays, zero, Council file 15877, appropriating the sum of $234,592 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from HUD for the Emergency Solutions Grant projects. By Mr. Jones, seconded by Mrs. Heran Kunso, the council file ordinance number 15877, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Heran Kunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance 15877, yeas, seven, nays, zero, on first reading.
Mr. President, I'd like to take a balance, or a motion to weigh the balance.
I second the motion. Move in properly, second. No separations. Rose?
Okay, voting on the balance of the agenda, Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Heran Kunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon. And that takes us to committee reports, Mr. President.
Okay, let's start with Councilman Mersky.
Right, thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of things, as on the agenda, you saw $40,000 from the Erie County Greenways Grant for McClellan Park. We're very excited about the developments at McClellan Park on the east side. It's a slow process, but we continue to move forward with it, and it's through competitive grants, like the Greenways Grant, that we're going to be able to provide the funding to get that project rolling. And so I want to thank the county for providing that, and we just continue to move forward. This summer, they're putting a road in for access to the park, and it's a great wooded area on the east side, and if you haven't been up there yet, I encourage you to go out and right off of 26th and McClellan, and take an opportunity to see that. I attended last Saturday the Bethany Outreach Center's Soul Search Walk. Bethany Outreach is on 10th and German, and it was a fundraiser for their ministries there. But one of the neat things about the fundraiser was that we walked through the neighborhood on the lower east side, and visited some of the businesses, some of the historic homes in the neighborhood. The Benedict and Sisters opened up their St. Benedict Center for us to go through, and it was a real opportunity to get up close and personal with the neighbors and with the neighborhood. And there's a lot of hidden gems in those neighborhoods, and we always hear the negative about the gun violence, and about, you know, this, that, and the other thing, but what you don't hear are the good things happening in those neighborhoods, feeding over 150 people each week, the educational programming. And they're not the only ones down there doing that. There's multiple social service agencies and religious organizations in that area, providing, doing good work daily, and I wanted to personally thank them for the invitation. And also, if you haven't been down in that neighborhood lately, go down and take a look. There's some, I always go down for my Denny's ice cream, but slide around near the corner and check out some of the historic homes that they're fixing up, and check out some of the Kraus's Department Store, some of the little stores there. Habitat for Humanity has a neat store down there called Restore, and basically, they take recycled items from homes that were either being demolished, and they sell them for a profit, and use the profit to build new homes for Habitat for Humanity. It's a really neat store on Parade Street. Tomorrow, the Erie Reader is celebrating their second class of 40 Under 40, and I was fortunate enough to be in the first class, and so there's 80 people, young people under 40 years old, some of us are just under the wire, but 80 people in the city of Erie and Erie County that are in, making an impact as young people. Everyone says, you know, wait till you're older, wait till, and you don't have to wait till you're older, and these young people are doing it now, and I want to thank them. I know Councilman Jones was one of them as well. And so those, to those people, 40 Under 40, we celebrate you and thank you for being here in the city. I also am working with Christine Rush from Pat Harkins' office, Representative Harkins' office, on starting a diversion program for southeast Erie. Most of the city has a diversion program, but southeast Erie does not. And a diversion program keeps kids out of the criminal justice system. If it's their first offense and it's nonviolent, and what it'll allow the judge to do, the district judge, is to bring them into the diversion program where a group of concerned citizens that are on the committee will mentor and guide this student, or young person, rather, through a rehabilitative type model, either through community service or through a project. And it's been very successful in other areas of the city and in Mill Creek, and we're looking forward to starting that program. We're working with Steve Simmelcare from the Neighborhood Watch Council on that, and look forward for more details on that to come. Cathedral Prep, I just wanted to congratulate them on their event center groundbreaking. It's going to be a lot of construction jobs in the city of Erie, building a gym and a pool, and so we're very excited about that, right on the 12th Street corridor. And finally, just a personal thanks to the Erie Fire Department. We had a little fire, it wasn't a fire drill, but we had a little smoke fire at East yesterday, and the East Avenue firehouse was out on a call, but the response time was remarkable from downtown, and they did a really great job. They're Erie's bravest, and they were quick on the response time, and even the teachers commented on how fast it was. And I just wanted to personally thank them for the good work that they do. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Mersky. Councilman Brennan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Council had a couple study sessions last week on May 22nd. We talked about the CRIS designation, also demolition delay ordinance. For the CRIS, we talked about the, everything required for the future application that required to apply, I think it's going to be next, next year sometime, so that we're trying to get ahead of the curve. But the creation of the authority was discussed, the number of board members who appoints them, but there's going to be future discussion on that also. There was kind of a first, first meeting with council. We also discussed the demolition delay ordinance. We had representatives from the Greater Erie Board of Realtors there in Preservation Erie. We talked about the proposed current details that we're looking towards, and then also several council members brought up some minor revisions and additions which are, need to be studied before that were, would be proposed. So the proposal's still under review by the Sillsters Office, and we'll look forward to hearing from them. And last, I wanted to mention, I attended the Vietnam War Memorial opening. The opening was appropriately held on Memorial Day. Thank you to Ken Kessel and his committee, and also, I know Councilman Kwiatowski was heavily involved in putting that together over many years. I know there's a lot of work to put that together, to find contractors, to get money for materials. I also want to thank the contractors and vendors who were able to donate their time and the materials for the project, because it is an incredible memorial, it's really a beautiful place to come and see, see some of the people who really died for their country, and beautiful landscaping, real nice location. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Winarski.
Thank you, Mr. President. No committee reports this morning. I did want to ask the mayor or his assistant about the summer rec program. That's this year's brochure. If council could also get a copy. I don't know if they've been passed out to the schools officially. I'm gonna really, really want the parents to take advantage of this. The city invests a lot of money with a lot of sponsors' help to give them something to do during the summer. And when they say the city doesn't participate or doesn't help, we are a number one player in a lot of projects for our youth, but a couple of years ago, I was in the youth program. I think I took the tennis, I came in second, McKinley. But there's a lot of things, breakfasts, lunch, you know, the city provides with the help of the Y, Highmark, with other various sponsors, but tennis, basketball, swimming. help of the Y, Highmark, with other various sponsors, but tennis, basketball, swimming. There's a lot of opportunities out there, but it takes the parents to get your children signed up. Do that little part, and help, help the community as well, instead of looking for the schools to do it, the city to do it, help your own, and that'll make this city a better place to live. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kunso, Councilwoman Kunso.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a reminder to council that we have our finance committee following our meeting today. We have received an updated copy of the delinquent accounts for refuse, and we'll be discussing the continued effort to reduce that delinquency with Paul Voitek and the process of changing the billing, so we'll have some opportunity to discuss that and work out some of the details. Also, I wanted to thank Councilman Brennan for bringing us this proposal regarding the Summer Jobs Program. I think the people who watch us on television have seen that we've been asked to provide some funding for a program in which we had not one, barely one, piece of documentation on, so now we have some documentation on the program, and we can certainly evaluate what's been proposed here. I know the Vanango Training and Development Center has a proposal in here, and the program is considered a pilot or whatever, a first year, and then we can obviously see how the program meets its measures, and then hopefully, in the future, the city will be able to partner with it as well. Certainly, we appreciate the efforts of county council, and the Gaming Authority, and the Community Foundation for putting seed money into this project to make it, make it able to start up, and look forward to its success in, in the future, for, for the city to be able to be involved with that program as well. They did mention that the Summer Rec schedule's out. I know that we received it in the newspaper, I think, maybe Saturday or two ago, maybe. So make sure that you look into things for your kids. A lot of these programs, such as the swimming, and the tennis, and the, and the doing plays, a lot of playground programs, so there's things to do for the young people, also the senior citizens with the concerts and stuff like that. So we just like to remind people that the city tries to do what it can to put some money into those type of activities, so we appreciate the efforts of the city. I think the Housing Authority helps, and the school district helps, so there's several partners that try to put that together, so take advantage of it. The other thing I'm working on is some renewed involvement with the skate park on Columbus Park has come to my attention with a project that I was not aware of that went on there, with a mural that is being painted on the park. So at this juncture, I have, will be meeting with the skating area folks, and the artist, and the Sisters of St. Joseph's, and also the Public Works Parks Department here, to discuss how to make that a positive impact to the skate park. At this current juncture, the mural that has begun to be painted on the skate park is not adding to the value of the park. Actually, it looks like terrible, particularly to me, who despises graffiti, and would have never, never, ever, ever, ever supported that action had I been consulted. However, since I was not consulted, the, the horse is out of the barn, so to speak, and we're going to try to make it a positive thing and add something to the park, rather than detract from the park. So we're meeting with several folks on Friday, and have a renewed, and getting the group to have a renewed commitment to making that a positive asset for our youth. There is a lot of kids that use the park for the purpose of skateboarding. We certainly want it to be continued to be used for that. We don't want it to become a place where people hang out or do illegal activities, and we're going to have a renewed commitment to making that a good, positive place for our youth, and so we'll, we'll keep you posted on it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Kwiatowski.
Yes, it'll be a brief report. Most of my meetings will be next month, my committee meetings. I want to thank the Neighborhood Watch, where we had a meeting here, Monday, I think it was, yeah, Monday. The only thing came out of that meeting, we're going to have the, once again, the Farmer's Market at 38th and Pine. Do you remember when it's going to be, Councilman Mersky?
It starts the first Saturday after the 4th of July, so I think it's like July.
Yeah, they weren't quite sure when.
Yeah, 5th or 6th, I don't know what the day is, but it's that first Saturday after the 4th of July.
We encourage people to, you know, contact us about being vendors, or just support it. It's a great project, kind of takes care of a piece of property that's sitting there vacant, and makes it look nice during the summer. And I'd like to thank Councilman Brennan for his kind comments about the Vietnam Memorial. It was a great day, and there's many people to thank, and I will thank them, not a large number, but from the city's aspect. It was a, it's been a long-time project. It has its roots much longer than the World War II and the Korea Project, so to see it come to fruition is great, and when you have two classmates on that wall, it's very poignant for some of us. But it's been a great project, and unfortunately, we're planning for the next memorial already, which will be the Gulf War veterans, they've contacted us, and long-range plans, we'd like to turn that into a park, and we'll probably need both the support of the school district, and probably Erie City Council in some way, the city of Erie. But to thank those people who made that great day possible, if, for those of you who attended, and I saw many of there, the use of the city's bandstand was, was a great asset, and I'd like to thank the mayor's office for his cooperation, Dave Rocco, who's an unsung hero around here, and also Bruce Doherty, who made sure it was there and set up properly, and taken down. So without, without the city's help, that day would probably not have been as possible as it was, and it was a great day. That's my report.
Thank you. Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would actually, kind of a funny story, not so funny, I guess in the grand scheme of things, but about a month or so ago, maybe a little longer, my email was, was hacked. Email that I've had for about 15 years, and it was approximately 600 contacts that I'd, you know, accumulated over those 15 years, was hacked, and supposedly, I was in South America, and I got robbed and mugged at gunpoint, and I was asking all of my contacts to send me $2,500 as soon as possible, so that I could get home, and I'd pay them back as soon as I could. Well, obviously, that wasn't true, I was, I'd not been in South America, and ever since that happened, it's probably been a couple of months ago, I've had significant problems with my email, is the point. And so I know that I have been getting emails that I have not seen, because I've been locked out of that account. I changed the password, did all the things that I thought was necessary, went back into it, lost every contact. My contacts were zeroed out, and so if, if you were trying to email me, I apologize for any inconvenience. I'm sure I've missed a lot of things over the last several weeks, but the clerk's office does have my new contact information, so if you, anyone that you're watching this, or even in this room, if you've been trying to get in touch with me, and I haven't responded, it's probably because of that. So the clerk's office has that information, so anyone that needs to get in touch with me via email, you can get it from the clerk's office. Someone did mention already about the study session that we had with Brenda Sandberg, and is on the CRIS designation and the authority that we're looking and investigating the possibility of starting in the city. I think it's very, very important, I think it's a great tool. I do also think that the more we hear about the details and the minutia of everything that's involved in it, it's very, it's not a slam dunk, in my mind, that we should look at no risk. I think you have to weigh the risks with the, the potential opportunities, so we're still looking to get more information on how this would come together, but I think it's a great opportunity for us, and the staff in the city have been working diligently and are kind of ahead of the game, and so kudos to them on, on doing that and keeping us connected. Also, the summer job, we talked about the summer job program, and there's a lot of opinions and a lot of different angles from which this is being looked at, but I think at the end of the day, we have to do whatever it takes as community members, leaders, leaders in our own sphere of influence, like our neighborhood or our house, to find ways to make sure that our young people in our community, not just during the summer, but throughout the year, have the right influence and right opportunities to be able to be successful, and whatever level of success they can, they aspire to. And so the Summer Jobs Program, I think is really a great idea. I think it's, as Councilman Brennan from the county said, it's just one piece of the puzzle, and so, but we need, it's, it's an important piece, but I think it's important to also know that the Summer Jobs is not a new concept. The city has been doing the Summer Jobs Program kind of under the wire for years. There's other organizations who have been doing this work along the way, so this is not some novel, new idea. This is something, this is another expansion or extension of a successful idea, and so we want to just always recognize, you know, sometimes when you're doing work, and then someone else has maybe a slightly different slant on the work you've been doing, then all of a sudden, it's like, no one's doing anything, but I think it's important to know that there are many nonprofits, many groups that are, that are serving our young people and giving them to trade skills, soft skills for employment, those types of things, I mean, Career Link, those types of organizations are constantly working, and are an opportunity for our young people, and of citizens of all ages, to develop and redevelop skills for employment, to make them more marketable in the workplace. Finally, it's graduation season, and I know my oldest son just graduated last Friday from Mercyhurst Prep, and so Curtis III, congratulations, and all the students in our, all of our high schools in the area. I know Councilman Brennan's daughter's graduating in, this evening, in a few hours, we're looking at the clock, and so congratulations to the graduates at all levels in our community. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. I've received communication from John Buckner from Erie Downtown. Two new, well, I wouldn't say new, two organizations are having an open house, and the public is invited. One is the Impromptu, located in the Renaissance Building on the first floor. They've been there for quite some time, but they have relocated in the building, larger space, and they have really laid it out. I go through there every day. It's a nice shop for ladies, and a nice shop for the guys on special days for the ladies. So, excuse me. So the open house is, let's see, Wednesday, no, Tuesday, 10:00 a.m., June 10th, Tuesday, 10:00 a.m., public is invited. The other spot is the Chef Bertrand, I think it's pronounced, Artigus, New Cloud Nine Wine and Restaurant Bar. It's located where the Old Babri was, in the parking lot on 10th and French. Again, the public is invited, and that is the 11th of June at 10:00 a.m. as well. Public is invited. And I'd like to thank John in downtown Erie for publicizing our business is new, relocated, and he does a great job there. I would also like to thank Dave Rocco and Bruce Doherty. They have been outstanding when it comes to summer youth program, and being there, and doing all the little things that we can't do. And in specific, I'm talking about the Summer Basketball League that takes place on East 19th Street between French and Holland. They set it up, they make sure I have enough barrels there for the kids to, for the kids to put their trash in. They shoot basketball quite well, but empty bottles and, and other trash, they, they miss for some reason. You know, they have eight barrels to shoot at, and it just seems to hit the ground, but we have volunteers who clean up behind them. I want to thank those two gentlemen very much. This Saturday, at the Eagle's Nest, 1129 Pennsylvania Avenue, we will have a coaches' workshop for all the coaches who are volunteering in the league. We have Nikki Williams, a consultant out of Pittsburgh, coming up to do a workshop. She did one last year, outstanding young lady there. And that begins at 9:15 registration and slight breakfast refreshment. Following that will be parent workshop, all the parents that have kids in the program. She does a parent workshop, conduct of parents doing game time, and that's desperately needed, trust me on that one. And that begins at 12:00 noon, and we'll end at 1:00. We're keeping it for one hour. Also, on the 16th, the 10 to 12. This year, we're not coming in with teams. All individuals who registered online will go into what we call a combine slash draft. So no one's coming in with a team. We'll have 125, 130 young men on the 16th, 10 to 12-year-olds, 5 o'clock. Coaches will look at them, take their name, they all have numbers on them. On the 17th, we'll do the same thing for the 13 to 14, and on the 18th, the same thing for the 15, 16. And that weekend, the coaches will gather in a room, and they will draft the players. And the purpose of doing it this way this year is that the coaches have an opportunity, if they don't have a team that dominates the equalness of the players, and you don't have a, one team beating another team by 30 or 40 points, that's not what this is about. It's about having fun without embarrassment, and if there's any team that don't follow that rule, I will thank them very much for their time and dismiss them. Again, thank the administration for their support, this current administration, previous administration, and we started with the Joyce Savaccio, and that's how long we've been doing this program. We have the best outdoor court in the city of Erie and the county. We're the only one to have glass bank boards. We, along with the city, were able to paint the courts last year. We're going to do a little more this year. We also thank the external sponsors, businesses in our city and the county, and I was able to get a sponsor out of Exton, Pennsylvania, close to Philly, and one out of Pittsburgh. So what we're doing in the city of Erie is moving along and traveling down 79. And that's about all. Oh, I want to thank Ms. Mersky, just listening to your report. You've been very busy in the community and traveling. I don't know how you find the time. I want to thank you as well as Councilman Brennan, and it's just outstanding to hear your reports. People hear it and say, well, oh, that's just a report. No, that's time away from self, that's time away from family, and that's just so important, and because I'm involved with the community very heavily, the entire city, but in particular, the community that I live in, that's important. I want to thank also Curtis for creating that job program, I believe it was last year. He don't speak about it very often, he just make it happen, and it's, like you said, it's nothing new, but I appreciate the time and you, what you've done. And of course, Jessica, Jim, we all, we're all out there. You see us here twice a month, and you say, all you do is meet. That's incorrect. We are working 24/7. We go to the grocery store, I think there's a senior citizen, just wait for me at 11:00 p.m. at Quality Market. I, I see her all the time. So it takes me two and a half hours to get a loaf of bread and a pound of bologna, because she's not going to let me go, and I can't get away, so that's, that's part of the job. And so we're working all the time for you, and we're concerned about every aspect of the city, everything that's going on. You know, we get calls about, what are you going to do about the crime? Well, we don't do anything about the crime, we're concerned about it. We can talk about it, but we give it to administration, administration give it to the police department. Police department do the best they can. We take, we take things- We take, we take things, guns off the street, that's success. You say just two this past week? Yeah, two guns is a lot. Two guns is a lot. So the police are doing what they can with what they have. And I'm going to ask Councilman Kotowski to set up a meeting with the chief of police, sometimes next week during the noon hour, we usually meet over at his office, so you check with him and see what date is good for him, and check with the rest of us, and we just want to take an hour out of his time. So when folks ask us some questions, we'll have some answers on what they're doing, what they're planning on doing. And I think that was another idea Councilman Brennan had indicated in one of his communications. So we are busy, we are very busy. Thank you very much for listening to me and me rattling on. Well, hey, is my time up? Presidents don't have no authority here. Theresa Cottrell.
Well, I just have one thing, the Investment Committee, we met on May twenty-first, and we discussed reviewing all our vendors every couple of years, just to make sure that our contracts and they're current, you know, with their duties and fees that we pay and stuff, so we thought we would do that on a regular basis, and the aggregate board did agree with that. So we're going to start reviewing first with our custodian, and then we're just going to go through our managers and then even our consultant, just to keep things current and make sure contracts are current and stuff. The funds are currently at over two-hundred-and-twenty million, which is, they've been pretty good with the market going up and down, so the next meeting will be August eighteenth for the Investment Committee and August nineteenth for the Aggregate Board, so, that's all.
Thank you. Administration.
Good morning. Just to follow up on Mr. Winarski, Mrs. Rancunso, and President Witherspoon's comments on the Summer Recreation Guide, it is available, it has been distributed to the Erie School District, it did go to all of the Erie Times News subscribers, home subscribers, it was in, in the paper. It's available on the city's website at www.eerip.com, certainly available in the city, in City Hall, in the clerk's office, and it has been delivered to all of the centers. This is a three-hundred-thousand-dollar program that we couldn't do without our commitments from Highmark, the Erie Housing Authority, and the YMCA who puts on the Learn to Swim program and the, provides the lifeguards at the Roger Young Pool. Lots of activities for our kids to do this summer. If you don't have a guide, please contact any of us here, we can certainly get it in your hands or direct you to the website. Beyond that, the Erie Airport Authority tomorrow is having a ribbon cutting, announcing their flight from Erie to Chicago. Erie to Cleveland is ending this afternoon, I believe, so tomorrow at four-thirty will be the first flight direct from Erie PA to Chicago, so lots of good things should hopefully come to the community from that. This Saturday is Highmark Walk for a Healthy Community Event at Presque Isle. All of the funds raised will go directly to the nonprofits who have people walking on their behalf, so it's a great community event, and all the money stays right here in our community. And just the last thing to touch on the Vietnam War Memorial, the mayor's attended that, of course, on Monday and said it was a lovely ceremony, and we want to thank Ken, Ken Kessel Senior, I believe, for all of his hard work in bringing that to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you very much. One last note, our next council meeting will be June twenty-fifth, we will not meet on the eighteenth, which is our normal date, so that'll be June twenty-fifth, seven PM. With no other business, meetings adjourned.
City Council adjourns at ten oh-two. Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Rancunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski.